All right, let's go ahead and get the November 17th Metropolitan Planning Commission will call it to order. I hope everybody's doing well. Welcome commissioners, thank you for coming. Hopefully this will be a quick meeting. First item on our agenda is two. Item B, adoption of the agenda, has everybody looked at the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have it. We are working off this agenda. Item C is recognition of council members. I didn't see any, so we'll keep a lookout and if anybody comes in, we'll call for them. Item D, which is items for deferral or withdrawal. Lisa.
Okay, items for deferral or withdrawal. Item 1A on page four of your agenda, 2016 CP 002 001, a request to amend the Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan on a portion of property located on Dickerson Pike. The associated case, item 1B, 2016 SP 089 001, a request to rezone properties on Dickerson Pike and permit an organized cap. Staff recommends deferral to the December 8th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item number five on page five of your agenda, 148 81P 001, a request to revise the preliminary plan on Grisard Avenue to reduce the amount of mobile home units and staff recommendation is to defer to the December 8th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. You've heard the items for deferral? Items 1A, 1B, and 5, are there any questions, motions to defer? Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor of deferring these items say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have it. We're on to item E, consent agenda.
First of all, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Items on consent. Notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So items for consent. Item number three on page four of your agenda, 2016 S 248 001, a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 3612 Richland Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and I would like to note that Commissioner Diaz Flores and Commissioner Blackshear are recusing themselves. Item number four, 2016 S 249 001, a request for final plat approval to create seven lots on property located at 3606 Weston Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and I would note that Commissioner Diaz Flores and Commissioner Blackshear are recusing themselves. Item number six on page five of your agenda, 2016 Z 126 PR 001, a request to rezone from AR 2A, IWD, and OR 20 to IR zoning on a portion of property located at 12575 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number seven, 2016 Z 128 PR 001, a request to rezone from IWD to MUNA zoning on properties located on Baptist World Center Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number eight, 2016 Z 129 PR 001, a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6 zoning on properties located on Fern Avenue and staff recommendation is to approve. Under other business on page five of your agenda, number nine, a certification of bonus height compliance for 20 Rutledge Street. Number 10, employee contract renewal for Justin Wallace. And number 14, accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Chairman, one question just for clarification. I'm not sure on, I don't want to pull it off, but certification, number nine, certification of bonus height compliance, 20 Rutledge, can you explain that to me?
That's a certification in the downtown code of the bonuses that the project incorporated to get additional height that's permitted within the code.
Okay.
So it's just a documentation that they agree to follow through on those things. Okay.
Make a motion to accept the items on consent.
There's been a motion to accept items 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 14. Is that correct? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right, thank you for the second. Any more discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now we're on to items to be heard, which is items number two. So if you're not here for anything else, this is our only item to hear tonight, so item two.
Good afternoon. Item number two is a request to change zoning for various properties in East Nashville. The request is to change zoning from R 6 to SP residential. The properties are highlighted in red. These properties are at the corner of Keeling Avenue and Elvira Avenue, just west of Gallatin Pike. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. Current zoning is one and two family residential R 6. This would permit up to 52 units on the properties shaded in gray. The proposed zoning is a specific plan residential. This would propose up to 180 units. The policy is conservation and T4 urban neighborhood evolving. This policy is intended to create and enhance urban neighborhoods that fit in with the general character of the existing urban neighborhoods with opportunities for housing choices and improved vehicular and pedestrian connectivity. Little history for this zone change request, on September 22nd of this year, the Metro Planning Commission recommended disapproval of case 2016 Z 089 001. This was a request to rezone from one and two family residential R 6 to multifamily residential alternative RM 40A for the same properties that are pictured here tonight. The applicant introduced a substitute ordinance to convert the RM 40A zone change request application to an SP residential, a regulatory SP zone change, on October 4th at the Metro Council. The Metro Council referred this case back to the Planning Commission and this case is scheduled for a second public hearing at the Metro Council on December 6th. The proposed SP is a regulatory SP, so there's no site plan that is included with this SP. It does include wording that is in your staff report packet. The SPR district would permit up to 180 units with a maximum height of 60 feet or four stories. The proposal is a significant increase from the 52 units that could be permitted with the existing zoning. It is also inconsistent with the surrounding pattern of development. While this proposal, while a proposal of this intensity could be consistent with the policy, without a conceptual site plan, it is not possible for staff to conclude that this regulatory SP is consistent with the goals of the policy. A cohesive plan that meets urban design and planning principles for circulation, infrastructure, amassing should be prepared. A site plan would holistically account for adequate access, appropriate transitions to the existing residential neighborhood in terms of height, setbacks, and unit type. Also, within the proposed regulatory SP, some regulations may be unworkable. For some examples up on the screen right now, this includes a formal greenway, but there's really no information about, of what entity would be responsible for dedicating the land. There are six different property owners included in this proposed zone change, so this could develop differently and at different times. And also the FAR and ISR are unclear as to whether these would apply site by site or overall. Staff recommends disapproval as the proposed SPR zoning is not appropriate without a comprehensive site plan providing transitions to the existing neighborhood, access points, and connectivity and because the regulations as proposed are not clear enough to guide the proposal.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Applicant, come on up, you have 10 minutes.
Actually, I believe that the council member is the applicant.
Is the council member the applicant? The council member's not here, that's why.
Yeah, council member's not present. But, right, if they're, if they're simply speaking in favor of it, they, our rules give them two minutes unless they're representing an organization.
Is he a property owner?
Yeah, is there the property owner in?
Is this Iris?
Okay.
So it's up to the board, I mean the commission about Helen.
Well, I think it's important, I mean for me to kind of hear about the proposal, what their plans are, I mean if, it's really up to y'all if you want to allow them more time, but it seems like they are the owners even though the councilman is the official applicant of the regulatory change. We should probably at least hear what their proposal is, don't you think? Is that what y'all want to do? So 10 minutes and it's our tradition for the applicant. Or we can, since it's not a, they're not the, you know, official applicant, we could do maybe five. Do y'all need five minutes maybe? Would, would, y'all feel good with five? Let's, without objection, we'll do, we'll allow five minutes, we'll suspend, that's not within our rules, right? So should we suspend our rules?
It's your meeting, chairman, so you can.
So without objection, we'll suspend the rules to allow them for five minutes to speak, if that's okay. That's fine by our council, so we did it the right way. So come on up and give us the five minute, since this is kind of confusing and the councilman's not here, there's no applicant, so come on up, yeah. We'll give you five minutes, thank you.
My name's Kevin Kane and I'm representing the developer team and the applicant Scott Davis, whose name is on there. Basically, the concept when we started was we're combining six different, well, several different parcels owned by six different entities. So the reason for the base rezoning change as opposed to an SP is we didn't want to have the parcels beholden to an SP plan should something happen where the development team or construction team went away, they wouldn't be confined to the constraints of the SP. So that's the reason for the base rezoning. When we started looking at the lots and its correlation to the Trinity sector and also looking at Trinity as it's called out in the next, Nashville Next Plan as a mixed-use corridor, our thought was the walkability to Trinity Lane as opposed to the walkability to Gallatin because it had the same designation as a mixed-use corridor. If we continue to require residential development along commercial corridors, we're going to increase the density and essentially eliminate walkability to commercial land within those corridors by not adding commercial options to the residents of the neighborhoods. So the concept was develop residential and residential neighborhoods and include walkability, including adding walkways along the streets, widening the streets to account for that density, but also being able to then add options in those corridors, in the mixed-use corridors for future development. So that was kind of the concept. Pass off to Rob, he can add a little more.
My name's Rob Cushman, also on the development team. One of the thoughts here with the development that we've been looking at, we are in general more of the HPR style of builders at this point. We're seeing it in the, in the market, the, those $300,000, $350,000 kind of, the.
Go ahead.
Sorry. The $300,000, $350,000, $400,000 price point that everybody is being forced, if you want new construction in East Nashville, this is kind of where you're pigeonholed, this is what you've got to work with if you want to find something that's a little more reasonable, realistic, you kind of have to get outside that urban corridor. Our thought here is to allow us some one and two-bedroom flats as well as some three-bedroom townhomes to add some diversity to the housing options that people are having when they're moving into town. Right now, we've got a lot of people who are looking at houses that we're building that just can't afford the $350,000 price point, they're just not in a place in life to be able to. Our thought here would be, I don't want to call it affordability, workforce housing, the catchwords that are going around, but by nature, 500 and 600 square foot flats for young couples or individuals are by design more affordable because they're smaller. So it's something that people who are paying $1,500 for an apartment downtown, they can purchase a flat, they have ownership, they have a sense of, of ownership in the community. This doesn't show the broader scale, we're 800 feet just north of Trinity, so Gallatin Road is 1,200 feet to the east, we're 800 feet from Trinity Lane. Right now, there are, I believe there are six developments going on on Trinity Lane that are mixed-use or residential. A lot of that residential, our concern, if we continue to build some of that residential and a majority of the residential in those, on those corridors, is those people will all have to jump in their cars and go somewhere else to be in an urban-ish center. If there's the commercial, the walkability, the restaurant, the shopping, that type of thing, doesn't, doesn't develop on Trinity Lane, which right now, a lot of that residential's going on Trinity, and that's what we hear a lot, is hey, push it to those corridors where it's really set up for and teed up for. And so though this isn't a neighborhood, it sits up against industrial land, in the back you can see there in a railroad track, and it is within 800 and 1,200 feet of both Trinity Lane and Gallatin Road. So it's not, we would consider it, consider it a bit more walkable than kind of what we hear, so. I don't know whether to stand for questions, I can back off and you.
No, no, we, that's fine, we'll, we'll ask you questions if we need to, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No, you can turn it just a little bit, so we can both see.
We just wanted, so that both the.
The speaker and.
The speaker and the commission can see.
Thank you.
This is a good challenge for you at that angle.
I don't think the speaker can see that.
Yeah, the speaker might not, just keep, yeah, that's good.
All right, I'm not.
All right. It's the little things. Is there anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Please come forward. And you'll have two minutes to speak and you need to state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Franz Vrana and my address is 921 Elvira Avenue. So I live about three, four houses from where this development would start. And I was showing the plan by the developer and personally don't have a problem with it. People are moving here a lot. And so I would like, if it's going to become more dense, that the density be handled in a smart way. And I think the best, in a, in a way that would be beneficial to the neighborhood and I think from what I've seen, the, the best thing that they can, that can enhance the neighborhood, one of the best things is homeownership. And as Rob was saying, I saw a plan with different homeownership opportunities at different price points and that would be more affordable than what's the new developments there now on that street. And so I didn't personally have a problem with that, I think that would be a good thing because personally, more owners and less renters, I think, benefits the neighborhood overall. And especially if they can get in at a neighborhood that's very popular, people are going to move here anyway, I'd rather them be homeowners. And so that's basically my thing.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up, you have two minutes. State your name and your address.
Hello, good evening, it's Anthony Shelton. I live in Inglewood, McChesney Avenue, which is fairly close to the development. I've lived in East Nashville for over a decade. It's extremely vibrant and I, I want to see progress, I want to see growth. And some of, some of these neighborhoods are stagnant, you know, there's nobody moving to East Nashville, it's simply for the affordability issue, I think is what's going on. I've got a lot of friends, varying income levels, different familial statuses, who would love to live where I live, they just can't afford it. There's no diversity right now, there's no variance in different homes being built. If you, if you want to buy in East Nashville, you need an old house in need of a lot of repair, or you can maybe get a small skinny shotgun house with a very tiny yard. For people that want moderate affordable housing, those people are being left out of our neighborhood right now. I support this project because it would offer the diversity that I'm talking about, it would offer, it would meet the needs of a diverse range of Nashvillians that are moving to our city. I'm pleased to see that it's in a neighborhood, yet it's so close to the walkability of the, of the commercial areas. I think that young families need this, need this availability, they, we need this tax money for our schools. I, myself, have a one-year-old daughter, she's going to be going to school sooner than I may, I may like. So I want to see the schools continue to improve in East Nashville, they need improvement. And it's, it's, improvement like this is development like this that brings families into our, into our neighborhood that wouldn't be there before. I urge you to approve the project just for the greater good of our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Come on forward, thank you for coming down.
Oh, thank you. My name's Whitney Pasterek, I live at 917A Spain Avenue, I'm here representing the East Hill Neighborhood Association. Before I start, I've also got some emails from one person who wasn't able to make it for each of you. You should have received, I think, a lot of emails from our neighborhood, from people who weren't able to be here today. I've also got a petition from Gary Miller, who's the president of the Maynard Place Neighborhood Association, with 20 signatures from his streets, and that's the neighborhood immediately above this one that this will also be affecting. We've been here before, no real demonstrable changes have been made in this SP since it was presented at first as an RM 40A zone change. We agree with planning, it is an inappropriate development for this location, this is nestled deep in a single-family neighborhood and for all the reasons that have been delineated over and over again, both in your emails and here in person at the last staff meeting, at the last council meeting, it is inappropriate, it is too dense, we do not have the parking, we do not have the infrastructure to support it. With all due respect to the two gentlemen who spoke in favor of it, I hate to say that this whole affordable housing, young families are going to move in thing seems to be a little bit of a line. I don't know how many young families are going to honestly want to move into a 600-square foot apartment, and if they do move in, once their children grow up and get bigger, they are not going to want to stay, which creates transience in a neighborhood that right now is just becoming settled. Planning has come to approach us to consider changing the neighborhood policy under Nashville Next from T4 neighborhood evolving to T4 neighborhood maintenance to fit with the rest of the character of our Neighborhood Association and our area. We are across the board in favor of that. I have been emailing and polling and consulting with people on next door all week, everybody believes that this is an established neighborhood. And with all due respect to Rob and Kevin, who I like very much and have spent a lot of time with over the last four months since this started back in July, the people who are moving into this neighborhood don't want to live in an urban neighborhood, they want to live in a single-family residential neighborhood, otherwise they would have moved to the gulch, they would have moved to midtown, and they would be maybe moving into one of the thousands of buildings that are being built on Trinity and Litton. So anyway, that's all I got to say. Thank you, I've got two more people here and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you for hearing us. My name is Gary Miller, I am president of the Maynard Neighborhood Association, which represents the streets of Elvira, Maynard, Iverson, Coney, and West Kirkland. I have gone within the last couple of weeks, door to door, just to, just to reiterate and just to be sure, most of my neighbors are, are middle-aged or older, I've actually been in my home for 40 years, one of the oldest there, not chronologically, but as far as being in the home. It had been stated before that this really didn't affect our neighborhood, which is far from the case, I can walk out my back door, through my neighbor's backyard, through the tall and skinnies, and I'm standing on Elvira. I also have a cousin who lives on Elvira, who I'm also representing, who is opposed to this project. They're all, I'm not going to reiterate all the reasons for not approving this project. I think the project would, would be very viable in, in the right location, but because of the density, it's not. As far as walkability to Trinity Lane, there is no bus that runs on Trinity Lane, there is no public transportation that supports that. Trinity Lane's infrastructure is already overworked in trying to even prepare to support the new structures that those gentlemen talked about from commercial development onto Trinity Lane. So for people who buy into these projects, houses, apartments, condos, they're going to bring in an entirely 188 times twos, somewhere around 380 vehicles that are going to have to try to egress, egress onto either Gallatin Pike, which they'd be forced to travel south, or onto Trinity Lane, where there's, there's no access. So from peak times in the morning to peak times in the afternoon, I'm sure the developers haven't bothered to tell them, or will they tell them when they, when they buy those properties, that they're not even going to be able to have a quality of life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, my name is Frank Hunley, I'm at 921A Delmas in the East Hill Neighborhood as well. I would just like to reiterate a lot of what's said, and said already, and I'll try to keep it very brief, but I think that it's noteworthy that the, the two times that this has come before, the different commissions previously, it has been rejected and I, you know, feel that the reasons that were just enumerated in that presentation were very sound. I live in the neighborhood, I walk my dogs like on the streets of the neighborhood where there are no sidewalks, and it's already a situation where it's like, I feel like it's unsafe to do that. So the idea of making such a dramatic density increase without there being the existing infrastructure to accommodate what's there already just seems just nuts to me. The neighborhood needs the attention of bodies like this, but it, it needs it to make improvements and enhancements on what is already there and in such a neglected state, you know, already. So, and just in closing, I mean just respectfully, I find it challenging to believe that this, you know, these apartments that have not been designed, have not been built, can, you know, be guaranteed to be sold at affordable rates when they eventually come onto the market, whenever it is that they're completed. I think that's a rather shaky argument to make on, you know, on behalf of, you know, making this change to this zoning. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hey, how are you all? My name is Andrew Walker, I actually live on Elvira, I've been there since July, been in Nashville for about a year and a half, used to come to Nashville all the time before I finally moved here. Elvira has no sidewalks, Keeling has sidewalks on one side, there's no drainage, there's essentially a drainage, you know, the little ditch where the water runs through, where you have to have the little bridge to go across. You cannot park two cars on either one of those way, either one of those streets without having to do the little fishtail. So it's one way, but when you have two cars parked, you have to wait for a car to go through. Right now, there's probably about 60, 70 cars in that area, well, if you're going to increase it by 180, you, that's a 300% increase. Granted, it may be close to Trinity, there's no turn signal to get to Trinity, you can actually wait right now, and we have people that because of the Trinity and Gallatin, they're coming through Elvira and Thompson now to cut through to get, avoid that light as, as it is now. And it's a racetrack essentially down that road. Since I've been there in July, 20 houses have been completed, as in are ready to be occupied, that are not occupied when I got there. So there's a lot of construction going on in that area now. So I don't really see where it's evolving, really, because since I've been there, 20 houses have been completed just along Elvira itself, which is a two-block area. Part of my other issue is, you know, there's a good thing about responsible construction and having affordable housing. 170,000 for a one-bedroom is not what I consider affordable housing, first of all, I don't know how many people could actually afford that, or will there even be enough parking for that, because if they're only going to have 200 parking spots for 180 places, where will the other cars go? Because there will probably be more than one car for each of those places. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Saying none, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and how about we start over here with Commissioner Farr.
Bye on?
Yep.
So I'm always excited to see something about affordable housing and glad to see that there's an effort with this. But there's a lot of things that seem to me that they're too unknown, it'd be very hard for, for anybody to be bound by this, these restrictions. You know, I agree without the site plan, so we can actually get a feel for what this development might look like and where they're going to put the sidewalks and the greenway and this, and, you know, the public benefits, I don't see how I can go forward with an approval for this.
Commissioner Farr.
I agree with that and with the staff analysis, I think it's not ready for approval at this point.
Commissioner Blackshear.
Basically, everything the prior commissioner said, I mean, I definitely understand the rationale for not wanting to include the site plan, but it seems that when you don't do that, the, the proposal. but it seems that when you don't do that, the, the, the proposal is just lacking. We have a duty as a commission to determine whether the proposal conforms with the policy, and there's really no way for us to do that, in my opinion, without seeing a site plan.
Like everyone said, I agree that it's too early to decide whether it's ready. I like the concept and the idea of bringing in affordable housing, but I think that bringing in a final site plan will really help us make a decision, help us be on the side of, you know, approving it. And just, just wanted to mention a few things that I would love to see in a final site plan, if we're allowed to say that.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that that could help.
Okay. Maybe increasing the percent of, of affordable housing from 5% to maybe something else. And also, reducing the stories from three stories to two stories, so that it could be a little bit more in context to what's already in that neighborhood. I think the density is too much, but I think there's, there's, you know, work that can be done to get there with planning, so that's what I suggest, just work with planning and get a final site plan.
Chairman?
Mr. Sloan?
Yep.
Okay. Now, I think this is a stretch for this community, for the character of the neighborhood. The density, I think, is a little high. I don't know what the density should be, but I think 180 units with that much traffic is, is not going to work. I think we need a comprehensive plan before we could move forward, before I could vote for it, showing that all the six owners are in, in compliance, and they agree to it, and that that's the way that's going to, you know, that it's a comprehensive plan that if there's six owners, that as they sell off, one at a time, whatever, that it will phase properly. And where the access points are, I think is, is very important, and personally, I think 5% of the units is low-income or for workforce housing. That's only nine units of 180. That's just, I don't think it's where, where we, we should approve it. So I make a motion that we disapprove.
There's been a motion and a second to disapprove. Any more discussion? All in favor of disapproving, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, ayes have it, it's disapproved. Item 11, historic commission. Commissioner Diaz is not here. Also, parks. Commissioner Diaz. Executive Committee report. I do want to say that, make sure you look at item H, the upcoming events. We have a meeting on the 8th of December, and then our retreat on the 10th. So make sure that you make special plans for your Saturday on the 10th to attend the retreat. And I'm, on a very serious note, it's, it's very important that all the commissioners try to attend, as this is a time that we reflect on some very big policy issues. So we don't take it lightly. The mayor will be there, and so I look forward to spending my morning with all of you, especially you, Mr. Sloan.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anything else, Vice Chair on Executive Committee? I think that concludes our Executive Committee report. Director's report. Doug?
Hey, you stole my thunder.
See, I do that every time.
Come to, come to the meeting.
Okay.
Come to the retreat.
Come to the retreat.
Actually, come to the meeting is great, because six members.
The meeting and.
And this seems to be becoming more and more struggle, to make sure that we have a quorum.
Don't talk to us.
I, I know. I need to bring it up, but even though all of y'all are here.
We'll send them a memo, the absentees. Legislative update. Our councilman's not here, so is there a motion to adjourn? Or adjourn?